It is now ten AM on, uh, what is today, March first. And we're gonna call in to order this regular session of Wood County Commissioners' Court. It is our normal procedure to start each session with a word of prayer. And I believe Commissioner Shirley has agreed to that this morning.
Good Lord, prayer. Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and thank for this day, and Lord, and thank for the many blessings you've given us, Father. And Father, we just ask you to be with us during this court, Father, that we might do the things for this county of Wood County that would be pleasing unto you. Father, just be with our leaders of this country and the leaders of this, this state. Father, forgive us for we've fed it all our many sins, these things we have in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number one on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here in the house today who wishes to address the court on an issue pertinent to the court? Seeing no one move forward, we'll move on to item number two, which is consider approval of personnel actions. Today, we do have six. The first is from the Elections Administration, Employee Carol Leann Howell, a separation. Also from Elections, Employee Alicia Durden, hired temporary from the Sheriff's Office. Employee Christopher S. Patton, a termination from the Sheriff's Office. Employee Ingrid Russell, a termination from the Sheriff's Office. Joe Don Baker, this is a change in position from jailer sergeant to jailer. And a, also finally from the Sheriff's Office, Richard Cronie, uh, also a change in position. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Pace, second by Commissioner Shirley. We approve today's personnel actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number three is consider approval of payroll. We have payroll dated today in the total amount of two-hundred-ninety-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents. I would entertain a motion.
May to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Gaskell, second by Commissioner Holland. We approve today's payroll. All those in favor? Aye. Motion does pass. Item number four is consider approval of line item transfers and budget amendments. Seeing none in my packet, we'll move on to item number five. Consider approval of claims. We have health, dental, and vision insurance claims today totaling eighty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, sixty-two cents, with a voided check of fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and ninety cents. So, an adjusted total of seventy-two thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, seventy-two cents. Accounts payable claims in the total amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, ninety-one dollars, eight cents. A voided check in the amount of a hundred-and-sixty-five, twenty-nine. I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion re-approved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Gaskell. We approve today's claims. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number six is a public hearing for the relocation of County Road thirty-three seventy-five by Union Pacific Railroad. And take any necessary action. It is now ten oh-three, and we'll call to order this, uh, this, uh, public hearing. Anyone who wishes to address this issue, please step to the podium and speak your piece.
Morning, Judge Means, members of the court. Appreciate you guys having us up here today. My name's Andrew Hugh Danish. I'm with Union Pacific Railroad out of Spring, Texas.
Could you spell your name for the clerk, please?
Actually, I'll do one better. I'll give her the card.
That'd be one. Thank you.
Um, I'm here representing the railroad to ask you for permission to close County Road thirty-three seventy-five, where it crosses our main track and siding, which is approximately five or six miles west of Hawkins. Um, what we're asking to do is close that crossing and build a new county road, parallel to the track on the south side. We would acquire the land through purchase, uh, build the road to the county standards, and bring it out to, uh, the farm-to-market road.
F-2869.
Twenty-eight sixty-nine. We would come out to there, uh, eliminating an at-grade public crossing that does not have gates and lights. And we would install a new crossing, uh, that does have gates and lights. And this serves a couple of different purposes for us. We are in the middle of a, uh, expansion program. Uh, we're extending our siding lengths so we can handle bigger trains. As you know, we're trying to move as much truck traffic off the highways as possible. To do that, we're expanding the trains to ten thousand feet in length. Uh, we don't have very many sightings at this point that can handle a train that size. So, we're, uh, we're adding approximately three or four thousand feet to a lot of siding. We've got Big Sandy under, or not Big Sandy. We've got, uh, Grand Celine under construction right now. We've got Will's Point, two weeks from opening. It's, uh, almost twenty thousand feet long. Uh, just finished up with Terrell, and we've got six more west of Fort Worth. They're all scheduled for the same type of setup. It's a large project for us. At the same time, we don't want to impact the local community, and we actually want to provide a safer environment. Uh, last year in Texas, there were a hundred-and-ninety-three train vehicle collisions that resulted in fatalities. Year before that, there were two-hundred-and-six. So, by reducing the number of crossings out there that do not have gates and lights, uh, we're trying to lessen that risk, uh, to the traveling public. Now, we're gonna do this completely at no cost to the county or to the state. Uh, we're gonna provide all the gates, all the lights, all the road, everything. And at a point that the county, uh, would agree to, we would like to deed the road over to the county. Uh, the normal warranty period for us is two years, uh, but that is negotiable, so. We have talked over with landowners. We're in the process of contacting them to decide, you know, how we're gonna proceed on the individual properties. Uh, we have presented a set of construction drawings to you. These are thirty percents. They're not final. Um, if you guys see changes that you don't agree with or do agree with, we're, uh, we're open to suggestion at this point. We did meet with, uh, my face out there, what, two, three weeks ago? And, uh, we realized that our location of our cul-de-sac that was required by the county code, we decided we needed to be moved. So, we wound up moving it west, approximately a thousand feet. It's closer to the, the end of the existing road now. It'll require a little bit different purchase of property for us. Um, but, you know, we'll, we'll work that out with utilities and the landowners. But, well, that's what we're asking is for the ability to, one, get a resolution from the county allowing us to build the road, and that the county will accept it into their inventory. And then, two, a second resolution allowing us to close the public road, County Road thirty-three seventy-five.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioners, any questions?
On, uh, how many, is there, besides county road, is there any private crossings in that section?
There will be a private road crossing closed, um, but it'll have act, direct access to the new public road and through the gate.
It'll have access to the new county road you're gonna be?
Yes, it will have access straight to the new county road.
That comes, and, and you'll put in a new crossing, and that's directly across from twenty-eight sixty-nine, across Highway eighty? Because I knew that private one was right down past twenty-eight sixty-nine.
Yeah, it's right to the west of there. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll close that one, give him a brand-new driveway, gate, fence, the whole nine yards. We'll take care of, give him drainage, ditching, all of that kind of stuff. That will all be maintained, you know, to county's backs.
But when it's opened up again, it, it, County Road thirty-three seventy-five will still be a county road. It'll just have a different coming in from the east instead of the west.
That's up to y'all. If you wanna, if you wanna keep it as County Road thirty-three seventy-five, that's, that's fine with us. According to the Department of Transportation, the people that registered the, the actual crossings, I can't move it more than a thousand feet and still consider it to be the same crossing. So, I actually have to decommission this one and actually create a new one. It'll still be the same road. It can still have the same number, but I have to issue a brand-new crossing number for it.
Yeah, 'cause if you change the number, that's a lot of trouble. Everybody's address is nine-one-one, and everything else changes.
Well, you know, the accident history and stuff like that is tied to that DOT number. So, I've gotta maintain that same number. So, but you're, you're right. You, to change the nine-one-one addressing could be tough. You know, if there's any cost involved with that, we will, we'll take care of that, too.
All right. Commissioners, any further questions? We thank you. We appreciate the information. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue or any comment? Please step forward. If you would, give your name for the clerk's record.
I'm Gary Marlowe, and, uh, own the property, uh, that's gonna be impacted by this. I have absolutely no problem at all with the relocation of the county road. However, it's labeled County Road thirty-three seventy-five across the front of my property. I ha, own the deed to that, and had given easement for the people east of me to use that road. But at one point in time, did the county ever contact me to make that a county road? They did come through and put oil top on it, but as far as I'm concerned, it's still my property. So, well, you know, the only problem I have is it's shown here as thirty-three seventy-five, but thirty-three seventy-five actually stops at my property line.
Is that it, where the gate is, or before?
Do what?
Is that the, where the gate is, or?
Well, it goes from where my gate used to be down to the Welch's Gate.
That's the Big Iron Gate.
Yeah, but I'm due west of the Big Iron Gate. So, I mean, you know, uh, it's just that when they get ready to start building that, we gotta worry about, you know, the deed in that property over to the county or the railroad or whoever's actually gonna accept that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Uh, on here, I think, or probably what y'all know it as, uh-
Can we have your name before you start?
I'm Lisa Moss.
Okay, thank you, Lisa Moss.
And the property right now is in my other name, Lisa Welch. Um, I purchased the property thirteen years ago, and I purchased it as it was, as a private piece of property. And now, they wanna take my privacy away. I cannot begin to tell you out of the thirteen years of living there of what I had to put up with on this road going to my home. It's bad enough that I pull in and see a naked man standing there. It's bad enough, I pull in, I see someone has left their drawers and deposited themselves and used the bathroom on the side of the road. Besides the trash and all the other things that go on, seeing people parked up in there with drugs and stuff, and who lord, what else is going on? And now, they wanna take this road and come across my property, which they are saying is their property, which in no form or fashion was I ever told it was their property in all my deeds, my records, or anything. I want the, well, I want the railroad just to move this, make it a single lane and leave us alone. I don't think that's possible, but that is my wish and my dream. Because right now, I'm gonna, the way they have this proposed, I'm gonna have all that junk in front of my house. It's bad enough it comes to my gate right now, and I've had to live with it. I've had to live with the railroad company blocking me out for up to three hours because it's the only way in and out of my property. I can't get the sheriff's department, nobody, to come out and help me. Too many people at the railroad know my name, and they know me. The guys on the railroad, if they're in the train, they're very helpful. And over the years, it's gotten better. But it has been, I have been blocked out literally on the inside of my home for up to three hours at a time. But taking my privacy away, that just really disturbs me. When I moved to Wood County in my land for that privacy. And I don't know if I can stop this. I don't think I can, but everything I have shows that the railroad company only had fifty feet easement. Now, I'm being told they have a hundred feet from the center of the track. I've got nothing saying that. I have nothing, never, in any of my documentation, my deed or anything, saying that they have a hundred-foot easement. I don't know why it has to be here. Why can they not leave us alone? Go to Big Sandy, go to Glade Water, somewhere else. Just take the double track out and leave us alone? Just leave us two little crossings there? We've managed it fine. You know, we can go across a crossing and leave us be, is what I wish. Otherwise, I wanna talk to Gary. I've talked to him before, and I really wanna understand what this is. He's changed the, this has changed some. They did have a turnaround in front of my home. Ain't no way that was gonna happen. I was not gonna let that happen. It's bad enough I have to have people, if they do this, come through my property now. My, my property was set up a certain way, and now everyone's gonna be able to come up and down through there. And that disturbs me very, very highly. So, that's my argument on this.
Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Morning. My name's Joe Holmes. I own the property east of Ms. Moss. Uh, to clarify some things, my dad passed away in twenty-ten. The correspondence has been sent to my mom. Since the railroad has started this procedure, I have inherited the property, so it is now in my name, Mr. Danish. And, um, the thing that I, that concerns me about it is, is I have no problem with a county road. What I have a problem with is all the drainage that they're fixing to cut on me. I have two shallow-water creek crossings that I have to cross to get to my properties. I have a haymeadow on one side that is my livelihood. I have a barn on another creek crossing. I actually have two creeks that run through my property. Where my gate is located now to enter my property is part of the highest property there. It's the highest ground there. Everything else goes downhill from there. In the wintertime, it stays too wet to even run a four-wheel-drive tractor through. I need some assurance that I'm gonna have a way to get back and forth across my property, okay? Because by taking these two crossings away from me, all they're leaving me with is just solid woods and a creek bed. Okay? So, that is my concern about it. Um, I understand, I worked for the railroad from seventy-nine to eighty-eight. I understand how the railroad operates. Um, I just would like some more clarification on what is gonna be done and how the compensation matter comes about. Because I've not been explained, in fact, I've not talked to anyone, about how many actual acres they are taking. Because they're coming into my haymeadow with a drainage, crossing a creek, taking out a corral that is on the highest ground there, that's the only place that I could put one. It's been there in my family, I know, for fifty or sixty years. And I just want to be assured that we're gonna be taken care of on these matters, that I have a way to work cattle and, and get my hay out and get across to my, my properties. And other than that, that's, I guess that's all I have to say about it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Is there anyone else? Did you wanna respond to any of those concerns?
Yes, actually, I would. All right, uh, let's see, where do I start? The reason we want to take out the current county road and relocate it down to the new east end of our siding is to allow residents like Ms. Moss there not to be blocked. Uh, she'll have twenty-four-hour-day unimpeded access, you know, to and from her house. The gated crossing will stay outside of the siding. Uh, it's actually gonna be right at the switch, so if a train's in the siding, it will not block her in at all. You know, and, and our plan is to, you know, if we do need to keep a train there, we chamber it for a while, uh, you know, that it won't impact anybody. Um, as for Mr. Holmes, if he needs additional driveway access off the county road into his property, um, we could look at engineering something, you know, via a culvert in the driveway. Uh, you know, if we need to add gates or cattle guards or, or whatever the case may be, we, we will definitely feel, do that for him. Um, he's talking about two low, low-water crossings in creeks that are on his property now. Um, I'd like to go out and inspect those. I know we have surveyors that wanna come out and start surveying the property. We haven't really done a lot of that yet. Um, to do that, we wanna see where the natural water flow is. Obviously, it's leading mostly to the south from the looks of it, uh, off of eighty, across the tracks, and then on to the south. We wanna find out where that water's going, how much water it's gonna be. If we need to do an H&amp;H study, we will. Uh, you know, that's, that's not a problem. Uh, we have staff to do that, uh, and if we need to provide y'all with the results, you know, that's- Um, and we'll come back, and we'll do a full G-Tech, uh, study also to make sure that everything lines up right, and we have the right material in the right place. Um, you know, as for the, the cattle corral, if we can move it, we'll move it, or we can pay to have it moved. You know, like I said, we'll do all the fencing, you know, that would surround, uh, that, uh, corral, you know, if we had to move it or whatever, and that, that would all be included as part of the deal. I'm not the real estate person. I'm an engineer by trade, so I'm here to represent the, the construction and engineering por, portion of this project. Um, real estate actually tried to start making contact with landowners yesterday. Um, they were successful to a degree. Um, they left a few messages. Uh, I guess they did talk to-
Ms. Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Okay.
And that was, they made a call yesterday, and that's, they got ahold of them. So, we're, we're starting that process now, uh, but we didn't wanna get too far out of, out of, uh, turn without presenting it to, to the county. Yeah, because if you shot us down now, it's wasted effort on our part.
I understand that. Well, you can appreciate, too, we have to give consideration. Obviously, we have to consider the safety concerns that you're addressing, but we also have to consider our constituents and our, our citizens' concerns as well. So, we would want, you know, some assurances and some satisfaction on their part that you are addressing their issues.
We can, I, I would love to sit down with each one of them individually, uh, and go over the plans with them, find out what they do like, what they don't like, if it doesn't work, if we need to relocate something for them. You know, the, these are, these are all drawings that we've done based on general areas that we've got, things like that. We, we haven't come out and spent a enormous amount of time on the ground, nor have we met with the landowners to find out what's gonna work in their property. We did relocate our road in front of Ms. Moss's house, um, to bypass her barn. The discussion that was brought up a minute ago regarding the right-of-way width, back in eighteen-seventy-one, when the Texas and Pacific Railroad built through here, or built through that area of, of the county, we were granted a two-hundred-foot right-of-way. So, that's a hundred foot from the center of the main track. Now, somewhere, somehow, I don't know if it's a recording issue, and that's something we're gonna have to go back and do title research to find out, if it was actually shrunk back down to fifty feet, which is the common standard, uh, across the state of Texas, or if it still is the hundred foot from center of track. So, we will determine all of that. If it is a hundred feet, then the roadway easement issue actually belongs to us. Because the county road would actually fall on U.P. property. But, you know, but that's, that's something that we'll, we'll do all the legwork on that and provide the, the results.
Commissioners, any, any further questions of, anyone? Does anyone else have any further question? Please approach.
When, when he says that that property may already belong to them, the hundred foot, does that mean that the landowners that have been there, in my case, three generations, are gonna lose that with note?
No, sir, I don't think that's what he's, he's saying at all. I'm, there's no way for us to determine that until we get the drawings and find out exactly what the easement is. I don't think they're interested in, in taking anything more than what they're trying to accomplish. And it sounds to me as if everyone is trying to come to a resolution that will be satisfactory to everyone. That's what our objective is. Um, obviously, we want to address the safety issue, as I already said, but we want to make sure it is as little disruption as possible to all the landowners as well.
Okay, I understand that. I, I'm just not understanding his statement about if it is the hundred foot, then it belongs to us anyway.
I, I can't address that issue because I don't know what the definition is legally.
Okay, thank you.
You're asking me to, to tell you a specific, I can't because I don't know what it is. Uh, if, if the hundred foot was there at the outset, and if it has never been changed, then yes, it does belong to them. I don't think they ever had any intention or have any intention of taking that from you, but that is certainly a possibility.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wished to address the issue? All right, it is now ten-twenty-five. We are going to close this, uh, public hearing. Uh, we do have on here, take necessary action. What were you thinking in far, as far as action? I don't think there's anything specific we're gonna do today. Uh, there have been some issues, some valid landowner issues raised. We would want those addressed. It appears to me the railroad is, is willing to at least start this, uh, from the standpoint of trying to make everybody happy. So, uh, we're gonna be kind of refereeing, I think, between, trying to make everybody as happy as possible. But I do think it is a, an issue that, uh, will result in everyone's safety being improved, it does sound like. And I assure you that we will stand with you all, trying to get as much as possible, uh, to your benefit as well, so that everyone is happy with what we have when we're done. Commissioners, have you any other comments anyone wishes to make? All right. Item number seven is consider approval of order of exemption from inscription requirements of county-owned vehicles. What? I did, I closed the public hearing. I don't, we're not, we're not taking any action, but I did close it, okay? All right, we have in our packet a copy of the order of exemption from, uh, inscription requirements for county-owned vehi, vehicles. I believe this is an annual document we do, so this is the one proposed for twenty-thirteen, and would affect the, uh, obviously, the sheriff, district attorney's office, the constables, uh, juvenile probation, all the vehicles, correct? All right, so I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pace, second by Commissioner Gaskell, that we approve the order of ex, exemption from inscription requirements of county-owned vehicles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number eight is consider approval of lake house rental policy. Yes?
They might be, you know, they can leave.
No, anyone is free. If, if you, we'd love to have you stay for the whole court meeting. If you, if you are wanting to go or, or converse or whatever, feel, feel free to do so. You're not gonna affect us, and we do appreciate all of you being here. Item number nine, eight is consider approval of lake house rental policy. You do have in your packet a copy of the proposed lake house rental policy. Uh, I don't recall that we made any great changes other than there was one issue added with respect to, and let me find out where it was. Uh, under the first line, under rental payment policy, you'll notice a line's been added, "For any consideration for rent abatement at policy outset is to be determined by the county commissioner in charge of that said county lake." Do any of y'all have any questions about that added sentence? If not, I don't believe there's any other changes.
I think the, the main thing was, uh, in the old policy, it had, uh, talked about renting to deputies, highway patrols, and employees, and public, and then down below, it said, uh, that if they wasn't an employee of the county, and they couldn't, but that, that contradicted itself because you rent it to the public, it necessarily wouldn't. So, we just had to correct that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
May to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, second by Commissioner Holland, that we approve the lake house rental policy for twenty-thirteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number nine is consider approval to sell surplus equipment through www.oxymeterexpress.com for precinct four. Mr. Shirley, you wish to address this?
It's just some items that we don't use, and some stuff that's just taking up space, and I'm just, wanna make a motion that we let sell this stuff to sort of clean it around the area.
Okay, and you do find in your packet, uh, the list, I believe you were talking about, of fifteen different pieces of equipment here?
Right.
All right.
You made a motion, I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley, second by Commissioner Pace, that we approve the, we, we do approve, uh, precinct four to sell surplus equipment through www.oxymeterexpress.com as listed on their request. All those in favor? Aye, motion does pass. Item number ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, we are going to pass. Uh, we haven't got, quite got those bids set as we want them, and the, uh, bank has not returned the signed service agreement. So, we'll move to item number fourteen. Consider approval of renewal of insurance coverage of auto liability, auto fi- auto physical damage, general liability, public officials' liability, and law enforcement liability in Wood County CSCD with the Texas Association of Counties. This is a renewal for the Wood County as well as the CSCD, correct? And that is in your packet, so I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, second by Commissioner Holland, that we approve the renewal of insurance coverage of auto liability, auto physical damage, general liability, public officials' liability, and law enforcement liability for Wood County as well as Wood County CSCD with the Texas Association of Counties. All those in favor? A motion does pass. Item number fifteen is consider approval of revised travel policy. You find in your packet a copy of the proposed travel policy. I believe the only change we made in this is under your county tax collector deputies, the mileage has been increased to reflect, instead of two-hundred-and-fifteen a month, up to two-hundred-and-fifty a month. Is that correct? All right. So with that change noted, I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion, we approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Pace, that we approve the revised travel policy. All those in favor? A motion does pass. Item number sixteen is consider approval of allied waste services agreements for Wood County Courthouse and Wood County Jail. You will find in your packet a copy of that proposal. It did come. We are combining the two, I believe, which should result in a hundred-and-fifty-five a month reduction or something to that effect.
Yes, it is a reduction.
All right, so I would entertain that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, second by Commissioner Shirley, that we approve allied waste services agreement for the Wood County Courthouse and the Wood County Jail. All those in favor? A motion does pass. Item number seventeen is consider acknowledgement of Securus Technologies Agreement renewal for the inmate telephone services for a term of one year. You find in your packet a copy of the document from Securus. It is agreed and accepted by our sheriff, Jim Brown. And so I would entertain that motion. So move.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pace, second by Commissioner Shirley, that we do acknowledge Securus Technologies Agreement renewal for the inmate's telephone service for a term of one year. All those in favor? A motion does pass. Item number eighteen is consider acknowledgement of the Wood County Sheriff's Office Motor Vehicle Racial Profiling Report for 2012. You will find in your packet a copy of that motor vehicle racial profiling information report, and I would entertain a motion. A motion by Commissioner Gaskell, second by Commissioner Holland, that we do acknowledge the Wood County Sheriff's Office Motor Vehicle Racial Profiling Report for 2012. All those in favor? A motion does pass. Seeing no other items on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would motion adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley, second by Commissioner Holland, that we stand adjourned. All those in favor? A motion does pass. We are adjourned.